I call this October 1st meeting of the Paducah Planning and Zoning Commission to order and ask that you stand with us as we say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Mr. Summer, call the roll, please.
Mr. Benbury?
Here.
Mr. Bradford?
Here.
Mr. Morrison?
Ms. Schramke?
Here.
Mr. Shadle?
Here.
Mr. Wade?
Here.
Chair for Citizens?
Here. Mr. Bradford, do you have a minutes motion, please?
I move that the reading of the minutes for September 17th, 2018 be waived and that the minutes of said meeting as prepared by the secretary be approved as written.
Second. Second by Schramke. Are there any corrections, changes? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bradford?
Aye.
Ms. Schramke?
Aye.
Mr. Shadle?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Benbury?
Aye.
Chair for Citizens?
Aye. Mr. Wade, do you have our first item of business, please?
Yes. I move that this commission receive and file the application of J. Allen and Donna Sue Everett for the proposed re-subdivision of property located at 3810 London Dairy Lane and 31, or excuse me, 4130 Alameda Close. I further move that the requested waiver of the public hearing and the dedication of streets be given and approval of the submitted plat be denied based on the following findings of fact. The created lot, 40,000, 112 square feet would be much larger than the surrounding lots that range from 11,234 square feet to 26,660 square feet. An ingress egress easement can be established around one side and back of 4130 Alameda Close, which would allow the lot to be sold in the future and access would be uninhibited to the garage. A home could be constructed on 4130 Alameda Close in the future, which promulgates a goal in the comprehensive plan to increase the city's population. The existing property line could potentially be abolished and reestablished whenever the new garage will be on the same lot as the home.
Second by Benbury.
I'd like to give a little bit of background on this lot. The first proposal was going to be a detached garage on the Alameda Close lot. And due to subdivision restrictions, they decided to do an addition onto the house. The existing property line would be too close to the back of that garage. It has to be at least 25 feet. I've talked to Rick here with Dummer Surveying to try to come up with some ideas to keep the lot in the future. That way, we, this is a desirable neighborhood, so we would like to try to keep population density as much as we can. Some of the ideas that we had come up with was establishing an ingress egress easement to serve the garage, or simply moving the property line closer to Alameda Close, which would be farther back than 25 feet from the back of the garage. And Rick is here for any other questions that you all may have.
I do have something I'd like to share with the planning commission. I can distribute this, or you can distribute it. This is an aerial of Fairfield subdivision. Some of the findings of facts that's in here that was listed was consolidation of the lot being much larger than the surrounding properties. Within this subdivision, there are six areas where lots have been combined previously. Three of these areas are larger than what we are proposing with these two lots to be combined. These six sites are being used as one-lot development where they have been combined. The reason Mr. Everett purchased this vacant lot was the sole purpose of consolidating this and being able to build a garage. The existing home has a one-car garage and doesn't accommodate the need for the number of vehicles they have. I understand that there's quite a bit of on-street parking in portions of this subdivision. On Alameda Close, I think there's neighbors actually park on the road rather than off-street parking. And he's trying to alleviate that problem from his perspective by building this garage, so he will have a place to house his cars, vehicles. This request to consolidate these two lots are in compliance with the subdivision and with the zoning ordinance that are in place. We're not asking for any variances. It's inconsistent, it is consistent with other properties that have been combined previously. Do you have any, this is Mr. Everett. Would you like to add anything?
Yeah, I approached this problem for years.
Come on up here.
First month of this year, I went down and talked to Mr. Summers, and I brought a drawing with me and showed it to him. And he said, "Well, you can do this if you abolish this line." I wanted to make it one lot. And he said, "Hire you a licensed land surveyor. They can get that done for you." That's what I did. Then I come back with the opposition. I spent about $60,000 on this lot after I bought it to do all this to it. And now you're saying I can't do it. It's pretty devastating. I mean, I'm not trying to do anything to the neighborhood except clean it up. This lot was useless when I bought it. Rick Murphy came out, looked at it. He had a water issue there. I took care of all that. If you go across the back of this property, there was a water easement all the way through here. It's almost non-buildable. And so I chose to turn it into my backyard with the garage. That's all I tried to do.
I might also add that building inspection also requested that, or pointed out to Mr. Everett that he needed to abolish this property line in order to build a garage.
Did I hear, did I hear you say that most of the people parked on Alameda Close?
There are, there is on-street parking there on Alameda Close. Is that, is that correct?
Yeah, in front of our house on, man drag there, two people parked on the street all the time. And then on the back, I actually had to get a guy to move his car today on my back lot there before we could get into it.
I have a question, Josh. Seeing this aerial view, how does the request different from the home, differ from the homes that do have adjoining lots?
We just looked at the lots that surrounded this piece of property that ranges from that 11,234 to the 26,660. That's the lots that touches these lots.
Okay, so you're saying you didn't look at the whole subdivision area. You just looked at the adjoining?
Right. Some of these lots, the one further down Alameda Close, the one on Oxford Trace, they're still, as far as I know, and Rick, correct me if I'm wrong, there's still two lots that just have a house built across the property.
Okay, they have not had the lot line removed, as far as I know.
I don't know if the lot line has, I didn't research it to see if there's been a waiver filed on it. But there are buildings across the property line, so it cannot be sold as two lots with the building across the line, or separate lots.
Josh, you had made a comment that the attached garage that he was considering would be too close to the setback line?
Yes, because whenever you attach it, it becomes part of the principal structure at that point.
How much of the other lot would be needed if the lot line were to be, this would be abolished and a new one recreated that provides the adequate setback? Is it, would there then be sufficient land for a lot that could be buildable in the future?
Do you know the answer to that?
That was a question I was going to ask, too. If there could be a portion of this lot added, and then the rest of the lot could be developed at some point.
Well, the entrance down off Coast, I can very well, the Marion era.
Where the driveway is coming in, it's coming through pretty much the middle of this vacant lot that's on Alameda Close. To put the driveway over to the side, it based on the lay of the land, it doesn't accommodate it well enough to do that. So the driveway itself would restrict the developable area of the remaining lot. But to answer your question, that lot line could be moved over. But in doing that, it doesn't really make the lot still buildable because of the location and where the driveway's going to be.
Well, absent, absent the driveway, how much land would be needed to accommodate?
Twenty, 25 foot.
25 feet from?
That'd be the minimum, from, from the existing line.
Okay. So the garage is going to be pretty close right up to the existing line, then?
Yes.
And then you have to add 25 feet or so?
Yes, it has to be, you see that 16-foot existing utility easement that's remaining in place. It has to be at least eight feet off the existing line, because it can't encroach upon that utility easement.
That's what I was going to ask, too. Can you, you can't build over the utility easement?
No, no, right.
That was my question on the other houses that cross the line. Every house in there had that same easement on all four sides. Unless they got variance to cross that line.
That is true. There are side utility easements, as you could see on this plat that we have before you, that there are eight-foot wide utility easements on each lot, being 16-foot total between two houses. So these houses that you see here, that if they have not been abolished, the lot lines have not been abolished, then they are built over utility easements.
Utility easements, yes.
Josh, help me here. The staff has recommended that we deny this application for four reasons that are outlined in our report here. We've been addressing the size of the lot compared to the neighboring ones. And then the last one there is that it has to do with the comprehensive plan. I'm trying to read this application and see a reason that I feel is, is a, is a good reason to deny the application. Can you elaborate a little bit on that fourth point about the comprehensive plan? And there was, there was also a comment in here about the population density.
Right. City of Paducah has been losing population for a couple decades now. So as part of the new strategic plan that just came out in the last month from the mayor's office, one of the goals in there is to increase the city's population. We have been trending upwards, we think, based on the amount of apartments being built. But we would like to retain as many lots as possible. If you all would remember, probably four or five years ago, we had a text amendment which would allow garages on the same frontage as the street. That way, we wouldn't have to keep abolishing property lines. That was for that reason, was to retain density. This is a very desirable neighborhood. We would like to see a home built there if, if possible. And so that's why we recommended and gave some options on hopefully what we can work out that would be amicable to build the garage.
Well, my concern with that really is, and I understand the, the goal there, but Fairfield is a fairly well-established subdivision that's been around for a long time. There's not a home built on the lot yet. There's likely a reason for that.
It's not a very desirable lot, yeah.
I've, I've seen the lot, and I, and I can understand why it wouldn't be, because the, mainly because from my perspective as a potential home buyer, the, the curb frontage or the road frontage right there is very, very narrow. And I suspect that that's one reason why it's not. So my concern is that we're, we're anticipating a possible future outcome here. If we deny this, that somebody will build a house on it that might not ever come to fruition. And I would hate to see that land go unused, especially when we have an applicant here, a property owner, that's bought the property for the purpose of using it. And then we deny them, and what we are denying it for is not a real legitimate possibility.
He owns the property. We could deny him to use his own property.
Right. Well, and the other thing I was wondering about, I mean, his presentation, it sounds like he went through all the right steps. Where did we go wrong? I mean, he came to us and we said, "Proceed," which he did.
Whenever we have plats, site plans, any TIF districts, all that good stuff, planning does have a meeting every Wednesday. Myself, Tamara, Cheryl, in some cases, Katie, the new Main Street Director. And we review everything, and we play devil's advocate, basically, on what's the pros, what's the cons. And so that was the consensus coming out of that meeting.
And that meeting was now, it was not back when he first originated this whole request?
It was about, about two or three weeks ago.
Well, the other thing that I see is, am I counting correctly here that there are one, two, three, four, five, six, seven available lots that have not been built on that are surrounding this particular area?
That, that is correct. And I believe they was all listed, and Rick, you may know this, they was all listed about two years ago. So I don't know if they have been bought since then, but they was varying prices from 35,000 to 60,000.
Okay, and the lots you come with exactly the freedom and around the house, those had been bought and they will never be built on. They bought them to keep people from building on them.
I can actually back that up to some extent. I, I have some familiarity with the other house on Alameda Crescent. There's two landlocked lots behind it that they would have to have an easement across another piece of property. And the third one, which I, as far as I know, is not owned by the neighboring property owner, but that also would have to have an easement for it to ever be built on. So you have a pretty large chunk of property there that might be bigger than this lot that probably will never be, never be developed.
I would like to ask a question of the commission in, in view of these findings of facts. I'd like to know this, just for my own recommendation to future clients. Is it going to be a stance at the planning commission, it's not going to allow lots to be combined in the future?
Well, please know, these are not our recommendations.
I know.
This is the planning department's recommendation.
Well, I guess we're going to set to Josh, because I'd have a client that we're going to be presenting four lots that are going to be consolidated so they can build a house, the four lots as they exist. None of the four are large enough.
I believe that's a case-by-case situation.
It is, and
That's a great question.
A lot of it has to do with retaining density if we can. But the answer to your question is, yes, you'll still be able to combine lots. In fact, at the last planning commission, there was two lots in the Grove that was combined, and staff had a positive recommendation for those. And if it's the four lots on Tremble?
Tremble, yes.
Yeah. As far as I know, staff will have a positive recommendation for that one as well, until we actually get the plat in and review it. But I've been talking to your client as well. So it is on a case-by-case basis. It just depends on the location, the density of the area, the desirableness of the area.
Well, Madam Chairman, I can appreciate the findings of facts that the staff has addressed here. But in lieu of the information I presented to you, I don't, you know, I see several of these findings of facts, you know, they don't meet the requirement. We've got, we've got lots in here that have been combined. We've got at least three lots that have been combined that are larger, and some, in one case, much larger, by over 10,000 square feet than what we're proposing.
I have a question on the three lots. The land contiguous with those two lots, is that an easement? Or is that?
I'm sorry, sir.
See where the F is on the 40,112 feet, square feet? See where the F is?
Yes.
All right.
That's actually right of way, that, that odd shape, yeah, that's, that's right of way.
So that keeps it from being, it's landlocked?
Yes.
Okay.
I think, considering all that's going on here, that I'd like to table this and let the staff and the applicant come to a resolution on this, rather than us just deciding it up and down tonight.
Well, he's hoping to get a decision on this, because he's going to lose his builder if he doesn't have a decision.
I've been working on it for years, waiting to get this all done.
Well, the motion we have
I need to start tomorrow.
Yeah. The motion we have before us is to deny the application.
Based on a recommendation of staff?
Yeah. Going one by one through these findings of facts, I don't have personally a problem with the size of the lot, because we have neighborhoods all, all over the city that have varying lot sizes. I agree that an ingress egress easement is a possible solution. But what we have before us is a property owner who's paid money to have a survey done. He would have to redo that again in order to pursue that route. So I'm inclined to not make him do that if we can find another solution for him. And then the interest of the comprehensive plan, I don't find very compelling with this, because I don't think that this is a very likely place for a house to be built. So in, in light of all those, I would urge us to go ahead and vote on this. And I'm going to vote no to the motion. And then I would like to maybe entertain another motion to approve it.
Well, and, and kind of an extension of what you're saying, I think Mr. Everett took all the right steps. I think he's gone through everything the city required him to do. And now, the decision is being suggested that we reverse all of this? I've got a real problem with that. I think that, as you say, the money you've spent, the steps you've taken, you've done what you were told to do. And you did that. I don't see it being that detrimental to having this as you request. I think the, it's pretty apparent it's not a desirable lot, so.
Well, and I also see that there are one, two, three, four, five, six, at least six within the city that are available for, to be built on. So it's not like it's the only option. So I don't, you know, I don't feel uncomfortable about it either.
I just feel, don't like going cross, being contrary to what staff has recommended. I don't know what staff has recommended is, is really valid. That's why, that's why I suggested we push it back to staff and let them get this resolved. I'm sorry about the timing, but I just, considering what has been presented to us, a recommendation declined?
I would agree with you on other applications types, but this is a waiver of subdivision. I don't think that there's much else to consider, other than the two alternatives that we've been proposed. What, either we allow the consolidation of these lots, or there's another application that comes before us regarding, well, it wouldn't be an application whether they get an ingress egress. Those are the two options available to them to get this done. So the only other alternative that we can come back with is that they withdraw their application.
Do we know that? Were we?
Well, I don't know that for sure. But I can't think of any other way for them.
I think that's staff's job to think of those.
Well, he did, they did say they would approve that 25-foot step back with the egress on it. But if you take that egress off that one side, and 25-foot off this side, you're down to a little, really small, with no entrance off of Alameda Close. You just, you really narrow that little open path. And that is that right one, too, there. You'd become, that log of highway that shows on the ground, you'd take that out, too.
That's the one factor that concerns me, is that the size of the frontage on Alameda Close, being able to put two driveways in there probably would not work.
It's not that far.
Well, the bottom line for me is that I disagree with the staff's recommendation here. And I'd hate to delay him any further when the likely outcome, if we denied this, or if we've gone against the staff here, would be that we have the very application that we're looking at before us again in two weeks, and we have the same question before us.
I agree, Tom.
Yeah, I agree. I understand the reasoning of staff. But at the same time, I, I really, I really feel like they have a case for going ahead and doing this.
I think we could modify the motion and amend it to say approve instead of deny, and then we could vote on that, if that's how we wanted to proceed.
Mr. Pete, can we do that?
Do we need, because of the findings of fact, do we need to go ahead and deny?
You're going to have to either withdraw the motion, because we haven't voted on it.
Right.
And then put another motion on the floor and have it seconded, and we can vote on that, which would be to approve this rather than to deny.
Bob, did you make a motion to table? Are we discussing, or what are we doing?
I indicated that's what I would like to do. And I think I'd go ahead and make that motion to table.
Okay. And then we'd have to have a vote on your, first, second, first, and then we'd have to have a vote.
Yes.
Okay, so you're making that motion.
Is there a second? Thanks, the motion.
Due to the lack of a second.
Due to the lack of a second, yes.
But that's, I, I just think staff needs to get this worked out.
Well, we did present two different options, moving the property line and the ingress egress. And I've talked to Rick and Mr. Everett at length about both of those. And my words to them was, if this is what you would like to apply for, please do so. That's well within your right, if you'd like to move forward with the plat as presented. And that's how we got to this point.
Now, the next thing we need to decide.
The bureaucracy of government and all that for a homeowner to go ahead and proceed, I think, is in the best interest of the city. And to retain a population, not just build a population.
The next thing we need to decide is whether we want to withdraw the motion, or if we want to go ahead and vote on the motion as it is. So, do you, Mr. Wade?
Why would we have to withdraw? I mean, voting on it, and
Well, if the, if the movement withdraws, we can
Can you say yes or no?
We can just avoid the vote, right?
If, right. If there's a, if you want to withdraw the motion, then we can present a new motion to accept the plat, if in fact that's what we want to do.
Can we amend the motion just to approve, take the one word out?
No, that's what we were talking about. We need to withdraw it or vote on it.
That was the findings of that.
Madam Chairman, I would like to withdraw my motion.
Second.
Second to withdraw the motion. Assuming we need to vote on this, yes, to withdraw the motion, or?
Put it on the table, yes.
Yes, we're, we're voting to withdraw the motion. Are there any questions, comments? If you vote yes, you're voting to withdraw the motion. If you vote no, you're voting to go ahead and, and vote on the motion as it is. Okay? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Benbury?
Aye.
Mr. Bradford?
Aye.
Ms. Schramke?
Aye.
Mr. Shadle?
Aye.
Chair for Citizens?
Aye. Now, would entertain any new motions that anyone would like to present?
I move that this commission receive and file the application of J. Allen and Donna Sue Everett for the proposed re-subdivision of property located at 3810 London Dairy Lane and 4130 Alameda Close. I further move that the requested waiver of the public hearing and the dedication of streets be given and approval of the submitted plat be approved based on, well, actually be approved, period.
Second.
Second by Benbury. Are there any other comments, questions, anything else you would like to consider? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bradford?
Aye.
Ms. Schramke?
Aye.
Mr. Shadle?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Benbury?
Aye.
Chair for Citizens?
Aye. And then we have one more item of business. Ms. Schramke, have that item, please.
I move that the planning commission recommend to the Board of Adjustment Case USE 2018-008 pertaining to 4704 Buckner Lane for conditional use be approved.
Second.
Second by Shadle.
I received an email from the petitioners, and they was going to be traveling tonight and couldn't make it. So they asked if I could relay everything. And what they're wanting to do is have a private practice in the home of coaching and counseling through the week, and then a couple of Saturday appointments, and maybe a couple of evenings. Being right on Buckner Lane, there is a lot of more heavier traffic through there, since it is the connection point between Pecan and Midtown. We did recommend approval. We did recommend approval for a positive recommendation to the Board of Adjustment.
They do have off-street parking, do they not, in their driveway?
Yeah, they do have a driveway on the right side of the house that'll be utilized.
How many vehicles approximately can fit in that driveway?
Four, I believe, because their garage is pretty far back.
I was going to say, is, in the picture, is that a sidewalk that we're seeing or is that a parking pad?
It's a parking pad.
That's what I thought it was.
It seems from the application here that there wouldn't be much parking needed because it looks like the business they're proposing to have would be one client at a time, most likely.
This one's the one I got, but mine's different from yours. I didn't get that one. Nope, didn't get that one. Okay. But you didn't get the one I got either. Oh, wait a minute, but I did. Okay, some got some, some got the other. I got the single behind this one. Nope, that's it, that's all I got. Is it a single driveway or a double driveway?
It just has one driveway.
I meant, single and with a parking pad?
Yes, you're correct. Just a single stretch. Is that what you're asking, Ms. Schramke?
So therefore, if there were more than, if there was a car up here and a car behind it and the one up here had to leave, everybody has to move and...
They would, yeah. That's right.
Back out onto Buckner, et cetera?
Right, or it does extend a little bit to that first window where they can get a nose around.
Okay, so from what I see of the picture, it's a single-lane driveway. So if you had four cars and somebody here has to move, everybody backs out onto Buckner. Well, no, there's a parking pad. There is a pad? Well, that's what I was asking. I see here's the driveway. This is a parking pad right here. But how many cars fit in the parking pad? One. Okay. I'm sure one. So again, if there's four cars, somebody's got to back up or do something into Buckner. Are you anticipating there being four cars? I don't know. They said there's...
The person on the signage, you said there's no signage or change, modifications. Is that permanent or is that today?
Conditional uses have a provision that we have to check upon it within a year, where if they're operating outside of the conditional use permit granted by the Board of Adjustment, then they can be brought back before the Board of Adjustment to address what kind of activities is outside the permit that they issued.
Well, and if they desired to put up a sign, they would still have to come back before us to get that sign approved.
That would be to the Board of Adjustment.
To the Board of Adjustment to get it approved.
But if they put one up in three months, in a year, it would be back anyway for a reevaluation of the use, conditional use.
Yes, I mean, we, that's every conditional use across the city on a rolling year timeframe. This would just follow my schedule, basically. I've got them all in the, we have a home occupation book that we go by with all the dates in there.
Well, the applicant is the only person who can have the home occupation. It doesn't continue with the property if that applicant moves or discontinues their...
You're correct.
No, I don't want to sound like I'm trying to beat a dead horse, but I am concerned about the parking because it says individual, couple, or family counseling. That doesn't assure me there's going to be one car in that parking situation. And it does seem to me that it might be backing out onto Buckner. And Buckner right there is not the safest road in the world anyway. So, you know, that does concern me.
And they could have the same situation with the current use as a residential home because most families have two cars anyway, so.
Or three or four, yeah. Makes it tight.
I guess that'll all be handled at a public hearing. The neighbors can come in and say, "Hey, we don't like this idea." But that's the BOA.
Yeah.
And Ms. Schramke, that point is something I would be glad to pass along to the BOA. If they would, since they are the body that issues those conditions, the parking could be addressed at the Board of Adjustment.
Okay.
And we really don't have any input about the width of the driveway, do we, as far as being...
Not a, this is just a recommendation for or against, so.
I know, I know. But that's a consideration for the BOA. Are there any other questions? Call the roll, please.
Ms. Schramke?
Aye.
Mr. Shadle?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Benberry?
Aye.
Mr. Bradford?
Aye.
Chair, proceed.
Aye. If there is no other business to come before the commission tonight, we stand adjourned.